All right, good morning and welcome this morning to the Elbert County Board of County Commissioners Meeting. And with that, I would like to ask Bill Anderson from Sun Country Community Church if you would lead us in the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, everyone. Pray with me. Father God, we thank you for the country that we live in, the county we live in, but we ask for your hand of protection, not only over the citizens, but over the peace officers, over the people who teach in our schools and protect our schools, the fire department, Lord, everybody who serves our community. We ask for wise decisions to be made by our leaders, and, Lord, we just hand it all over to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All right, we'll call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Buck?
Here.
Commissioner Schroeder?
Here.
Commissioner McDaniel?
Here. All right, thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Can we get a motion? To approve the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve as is?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with one edit, one item, action, item H1. Jim Marshall represents Spring Valley Ranch, not Green Valley Ranch. So if we could edit that before recording, that would be great.
So are you about D1 or are you talking about H1?
H1.
Okay.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is the elected officials, department heads and staff reports. Do we have any elected officials here that would like to make a report? All right, so you know any department heads? Y'all making it too easy. All right, staff reports. John, do you have anything, sir? Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is, sorry?
Fair Board.
Fair Board?
Fair Board.
Do you want to go ahead and do that now? We were going to do that after, but we can do that now.
Yeah.
Come on up. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I'm Lori Denson from the CSU Extension Office. I'm here just to take a moment to recognize, sorry, recognize our incredible 4H families and thank you for your support of the CSU Extension Office and our program. I don't know how much you know about 4H, but we have some pretty incredible 4H families of integrity and dedication, and they represent our Elbert County community with distinction. They're your positive families within the community and not only in the Elbert County community, but at a state level and at a national level. So we had our Elbert County Fair where 4Hers were center stage and had wonderful exhibits that qualified to go on to State Fair. We had 104 general project exhibits that went to State Fair. Out of those, we had 30 grand champions.
Wow.
Which is very impressive, so they represented our county very well at a state level with general projects. In addition to that, we had a State Fair Fashion Review Grand Champion, Berkeley Schneider, and that qualifies her to move on to Nationals. And Nationals is held in Texas, so our reach is far. We're not just locally wonderful for Elbert County and best place to work, play, and live, but they do a wonderful job representing us throughout the state, nationally, and in the world. And so part of our 4H pledge is that they commit themselves to better living for their club, their community, their country, and their world. We have several kids in shooting sports that are headed to Nationals that's going to be held in Nebraska. We have kids that are going to Western Roundup in Denver to be competing nationally. At that level, we had kids that took livestock to State Fair, and we had State Fair livestock champions and reserve champions at State Fair with their livestock. So very impressive group of kids. Beyond local, state, national, we had a delegate go to Washington, DC this year for Citizen Washington Focus and represented us very well in DC. And we had a delegate go to Italy for Ag Tour. So they are present not only locally, state, nationally, and in the world. And if we can indulge your patience a little bit, we have some of our 4Hers here with us today, so we're going to kick it off with Logan Good, if you wouldn't mind hearing from the 4Hers. We have Logan Good, Kaitlyn Good, Cody Monks, Azariah Smith, and Malachi Smith that would like a moment of your time.
Great, yeah, absolutely.
If you're open to that.
Yes.
And afterwards, if you wouldn't mind, we'd love to get a picture with all of you and the kids.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Outstanding job putting Elbert County on the map worldwide.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Hello, my name is Logan Good. I'm 13 years old, and I've been in 4H for, and I've been in 4H for six years. And today, I want to talk about why I love 4H. I never heard of 4H before, but then my sister found it and had to rush over to tell me about it. I didn't like the idea at first. I hated talking to people and trying new things, but after the first year, I loved it, and I did a lot more project, like poultry and archery. I also started talking in front of crowds and then talking in front of you guys. Archery is my favorite project by far because you get to be outside, learn to be safe in the correct archery form, and you get to make new friends every year by going to the county shoot and state. I love 4H because you learn so much with every project. You learn how to use a bow, building anything you can think of. You also get to learn how to show cattle, chickens, sheep, et cetera. 4H also has the nicest people that are supportive and helpful. They will help you with anything if you ask them, and they don't care about winning, they just want to be better than last year. The Elbert County community is very hardworking and helps other counties by giving them some resources and knowledge. Thank you for listening today. I will now call up my sister, Kaitlyn Good.
Good job, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, County Commissioners. Kaitlyn Good, 16, Sun Country. As you might have heard from my brother, I have been in the Youth to Mountain Program 4H for around six years now. In honor of 4H Week, I will be discussing the National 4H Slogan for the year, Beyond Ready. I'm beyond ready for work, school, and life, and more, thanks to the projects, people, and countless experiences I have had in 4H. I am beyond ready in my daily life because I know what I love and what I'm good at. I've pursued my passions in public speaking, leadership, hobbies, and sports not offered in public schools. I am able to speak in front of you today because of the workshops and competitions offered in 4H. I now serve as 4H County Council President, District Four President, and State 4H Secretary. I participate in archery with my brother and have learned how to hone different skills. I'm beyond ready to support my community. At meetings, we send cards to veterans and children, children in the Children's Hospital. We donate food to the Kiowa Creek Community Church Food Bank. In June 2025, I visited Washington, DC, spoke with Colorado representatives, and saw how our government works at a big scale. I also brought home initiative and a grant for a community garden in Elizabeth, Colorado I plan to launch in spring of 2026. I am beyond ready to do real-world things. Each year, I budget for my goat projects, file financial reports from the Elbert County Fair Junior Market Sale, and share my lessons at each step. It reminds me of managing household finances and taxes, different but based on the same premise. Today, I have discussed a few of the many skills I have developed in the 4H program here in Elbert County. To be honest, I would not be the person standing in front of you today without this program that we have. I thank you for your time today, listening to not only my speech, but my peers who came in order to tell you how 4H has impacted. Again, thank you. Is there any questions?
No thank yous, great job.
Thank you. I now call up Cody Monks.
Hi.
Hi. I'm Cody Monks, I'm 16 years old. I'm from Reima. I'm here to talk about 4H and its impact on me and the community and anyone who wants to join it. 4H has always been a big part of my life, and I've competed very competitively at county level, state level, and I've competed nationally. I show sheep, and I've been showing for eight years. This year, I've accomplished Grand Champion Breeding U, Grand Champion Senior Showman, Grand Champion Senior Premier Market Exhibitor, and Grand Champion Senior Master Showman. Also went on to state to compete and represent Elbert County in Master Showman, but the highlight has to be winning Grand Champion Market Lamp for the second year in a row. I had a great year, and it's taught me so much, how to be more responsible and a better help to the community. 4H offers so much to every single person, and there's so many different projects anyone can choose from. It really has a place for everyone, and it teaches you so many skills that you can use in the real world, like how to do record books, spreadsheets. It teaches you better communication skills, how to be a good salesman, and it keeps you very involved in the community. We participate in community service every year. We put on cloverbud camps for the youth to hopefully spark an interest in them and get them involved in this great program. We also put on galas to help support local businesses and showcase their items. I also participated in livestock judging this year. It helps work on your public speaking and your confidence. I won various awards across the state this year. Livestock judging is where you go and evaluate a set of four animals, and then you have to give your reasons on why you place them that way and defend them in front of a panel of judges. I hope to go on and compete at a collegiate level in this. It offers so many scholarships, and so does every other program. It really sets you up for your future and gives, helps you decide what you want to do with your future. I think it's a great program, and I'm glad for all your support and thankful. I want to thank the Commissioners and the Elbert County Fair Board for helping us putting on the Elbert County Fair every year. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you. I want to call up Malachi Smith.
All right, thank you.
Hello, I'm Malachi Smith. I'm a member of the Gold Creek 4H Club, and I'm also a member of Youth Council. I'm from the town of Elizabeth. I am 15 years old, and this is my eighth year in 4H. I have done many different projects, including shooting sports, swine, dairy, woodworking, and rocketry. My favorite project is rocketry. There are six different levels to rocketry, each with an increasing complexity of your rocket. I have been in Level Six for two years now. In Level Six, you design your own rocket from scratch. I like designing my own rocket with custom plastic parts that I make myself. To make these custom plastic parts, I use CAD programs. I have learned to design and build complex parts for my rocket. I do, I almost always do very well at the State Fair with my show rockets. In past years, I have won overall Grand Champion at state. 4H has taught me many different skills like CAD. CAD is very useful in the real world and can be a possible career path. 4H is a wonderful community with great leaders, and I would like to see it thrive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Great job.
I now call up Azariah Smith.
Good morning, sir.
Hello, I'm Azariah Smith. I have been in Elbert County 4H for five years now. I participate in many projects, including dairy, swine, leather craft, dang, rocketry, robotics, archery, musler, rifle, and pistol. And this year, I'm also adding a shotgun. 4H is my main extracurricular activity that I have as a homeschooler. It allows me to learn new skills and act with lots of other kids. Every year, I am able to attend two or three camps when I participate in workshops and meet kids from across the state. I am able to attend these camps with help, scholarships from leaders and Youth Council. Because of my participation in 4H, I have been awarded the Lempke Scholarship, which is unique to our country. This scholarship will help me in college expenses in the future. I have only one more year in the Army Division, and then I will move up to the Senior Division. I know that the skills I gain in 4H will help me prepare for college and beyond. I am so thankful that I'll be able to add these experiences into my college application and future scholarship applications. It is important that we continue to have 4H program in Elbert County. It has a positive impact on so many kids on our county. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
That concludes all of our speakers that we have for you today. I don't know if this is a good time to take a photo.
Yeah, this would be a great time. You've got a great team, a great group of young people, especially at their age, getting up in front of everybody, that the mic can scare everybody, so.
Yes. And they're just a sampling of all the wonderful kids that we do have. We've had a little bit of over 400 kids enrolled every year, and they continue year after year to make great strides and great achievements. So we're very proud to have one of the best 4H programs in the state, and that's thankful to all of our certified 4H volunteer leaders, barn superintendents, fair board, all of the adults that support the program, and for you, your continued support of the Extension Office, so we can continue to deliver a great 4H program.
The sergeant shows. Commissioner Buck, I think you had a comment, sir.
Yeah, while I'm sitting up here listening to the speakers today, I'm thinking about my daily life, and I'm going to start looking for 4H on job resumes when they submit them. Very impressive group of people that you had speak, and I want to make sure that you guys are in touch with our PIO Officer Wendy Holmes, to make sure you guys are talking about some of the impressive accomplishments that you listed, because I want to make sure it's on our social media page, I want to make sure it's on the county website, and you guys deserve some serious recognition. Thank you for all you do.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Buck, or sorry, Commissioner Schroeder?
No, this is always the highlight of the year, our best meeting of the year, when the 4H comes into reports, and it always is impressive, the awards that they've won, the stature that they have, the life skills that they're learning, their ability to speak in front of everybody is always impressive, it gives us hope for the future. And so we thank you all, we thank for the parents, the volunteers, everybody that's involved is all adding to this program. But I do want to say a special thank, thank to you and your compatriot in the back. During the summer, we had an extended period with no 4H Director or a CSU Extension Agent, and so these two ladies were holding it all together by themselves, and you would never know it from the outside. They kept things going just the way it should, and so we need to give them a round of applause for keeping things on track as well.
So Tillyn Allen is our office manager, and my coworker, hard to it, so couldn't have done everything without, without her help in there. And then we have a new director, Mary Anderson, who is at a state meeting this morning, so she couldn't be here with us. But we're really excited, the direction that we're headed with new people on board, and so looking forward to an even better year ahead. So thank you.
Right.
In the past, you guys have done a proclamation for us. We have National 4H Week that will be October 5th through the 11th, and if you so choose or see fit, we would love to have that proclamation updated for this year and hang that proudly in our office for the year.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, in fact, and be ready for our October 8th meeting.
Yep. All right, so we want to take a photograph now. If we can get everybody up here, we'll get in front of the flag, take a quick photo. Thank you. All right, Macy, we've got one more, is that correct? Okay. Hello?
Hi, good morning.
Morning.
Tammy Schneider, President of the Elbert County Fair Board. I have a pretty tough group to follow here, so I'm a 4H alumni, actually. I'm actually a fourth-generation 4H-er of Elbert County 4H. My great-grandpa attended the first annual Elbert County Fair. So lots of history, you heard the best of the best today. We're very proud of our 4H program, and that is why I serve as Fair Board President along with 13 other members of the Elbert County Fair Board, who give over 500 hours of volunteerism every year to this county in planning and executing the Elbert County Fair. We just concluded our 91st Annual Elbert County Fair, and our mission has not changed. We are a family-friendly event. We are free or completely low cost for all families. We do not charge for admission, we do not charge for parking, and 99% of our events are free to anyone who would like to attend. We showcase our 4Hers and our FFA program at a very high level, proud to represent one of the best Elbert County 4H programs and the best of the best in the state, in my opinion. We preserve our rural heritage and showcase our Western way of life, and we also highlight our local businesses with the best eight days of the summer. The fair this year was very successful, and we feel very passionate about bringing the county together for an annual event that's held the first week of August every year. Lots of successes this year. We went ahead and upgraded, and with the financial support of this county, we're able to produce a new website that allowed us for online ticketing and just a much more modern presence in the online world that links to social media. We feel that it helped us with our successful attendance this year, one of the best that we've had so far. Lots of new events came into the fair, including our partnership with the Town of Kiowa to bring fireworks back to Elbert County. Saturday, opening Saturday night was a big event for us. We highlighted and were able to recognize our Elbert County Centennial Farms and Ranches for the second year. Had a wonderful event. Thank you, Commissioner Schroeder, for your attendance that night. We were very proud to partner with the Elbert County Historical Society to bring that event to the county, and then afterwards, we enjoyed some great live music and lit up the sky with fireworks. A wonderfully attended event. We heard lots of great feedback about that. We had terrific livestock numbers this year and have one of the most competitive livestock shows in the state of Colorado. Everything from hundreds of turkeys on grounds to over 100 pigs, almost 100 beef animals, sheep, goats, rabbits, you name it. That fair is a bustling place with lots of critters for everybody to see and enjoy, for sure. We also concluded that week on Saturday with the biggest event of the year, which is the Junior Livestock Auction. Almost broke a million dollars this year, and considering the economy and where we were at with a new committee running the livestock sale, we were very proud to tell you that it was a very successful event, and we continue to love and highlight these kids that do such a great job bringing our community together, finding and networking to bring local businesses in, and just the support of those local businesses to make sure that our kids benefit from all of their hard work all year long. I have lots of thank-yous. Obviously, I would like to start with you three gentlemen and the Board of County Commissioners and their staff for everything that they do to support the Elbert County Fair, not only financially, but in so many other ways. You have a terrific team in all departments, but a special thank you, they're both here today, to Sherry Hewitt and Tiffany Hermes in the Treasurer and the Finance Department. I could not do what I do without their support. They're sometimes a shoulder to cry on and sometimes just somebody that keeps reminding me of what we're doing this for. I know it takes extra time out of their busy work schedules, and I hope they both know, and their staff, how much. I personally, and this fair board appreciates everything that they do. We've already recognized our extension staff, but thank you again, Commissioner Schroeder, for calling out the fact that Lori and Tillyn, they held down the fort most of the summer. We transitioned from a wonderful extension agent in Callie Benson to our new agent, Mary Anderson. We're very excited about the future of Elbert County 4H. But the fair, the 4H program, none of it happens without the hard dedication of those people, and I am very proud to work alongside all of them to make such a wonderful fair. And last but not least, I need to thank not only the 4H kiddos that are here today, but the entire 4H community that comes and works hard and puts on a wonderful fair, and it wouldn't be possible without hundreds of volunteers that start the day after fair is over and works tirelessly through the entire event. We have wonderful partnerships with Cowboy Up, the Historical Society, just to name a few, but so many volunteers on the ground through 4H and through the fair board and through the county that make this all very possible. And last but not least, I would like to thank the facilities team. Your facilities team is one of a kind. We couldn't do it without them. It's a lot of work. I think if you ask any of them, they would probably tell you it's their least favorite week of the year. It's hard. It's a lot of hours. We ask a lot of them. We bring thousands and thousands of people onto grounds, and they help us make it look seamless. Most people from the outside don't even know. So between, you know, tons and tons of trash and all the things that happen in running a huge event like that, they step up and they do it for us, and we're so grateful to all of them, just to name a few, obviously Maddie and Christine, Stan and Scotty, and then our Road and Bridge volunteers that help out that week that don't have to. So just a huge thank you to all of them. You know, Ken Denson up in Road and Bridge making, you know, helping when we get big rainstorms, I just, the list can go on and on, and I hope, I'm going to forget somebody, but I just want everyone to know that putting on the fair is a big deal. There's a reason why I don't come and speak to you the week after the fair. I'm a little bit cranky, and I'm a little bit pessimistic, but after some time goes by, I want you to know that it's a wonderful event, and without the people that support us, we couldn't do it. We had some challenges this year. I think every big event does. 2025 proved to be probably one of the most challenging years that, that we had to overcome. One of the biggest problems we encountered was on Wednesday at 2:00 PM, three days before Blackhawk was scheduled onstage for our fair concert, they called and canceled on us with no excuses and basically said, "Sorry, we won't be there on Saturday." At that point, we'd already sold over 1,000 tickets, and a massive undertaking went on with a committee of myself and Amanda Love and Mandy Taylor to try to figure out how we were going to replace a Nashville Recording Star-like Blackhawk and somehow put on a concert without having to make any refunds. The Lord blessed us that day. I was able to contact a friend who lives in Nashville who had a contact. We were able to get Mr. Brian Martin in on very last notice. He put on a fantastic concert. He was easy to work with, and I think for the most part, everybody was very happy with the replacement that we were able to garner up, and the show went on, as they say. Again, I've already talked to you about the Junior Market Sale, the Centennial Farms and Ranches banquet, our livestock shows, so many other things. I sent this picture in because it's just, it's a perfect capture for me of what the Elbert County Fair is. A wonderful horse pull, a free carnival, family-friendly events. It still feels like small-town country, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful event. I have some concerns, right? We have some financial pressures. It costs a lot to put on the county fair, and I do mean a lot. We have very quickly starting to outgrow our facilities, and your facilities team does a wonderful job managing and maintaining what we have, but we are quickly outgrowing those things. We do not have enough parking, we do not have enough barns. I have turkeys in three structures up at the fairgrounds, so we are quickly outgrowing our current facilities. We have lots of animal welfare. That's one of the highlights of this Elbert County Fair Board. We have to showcase animal welfare, we have to teach, we have to educate, but we will continue to keep that in the forefront of what we consider to be an important part of not only the fair, but of teaching and educating how our kids do with their animals and also the people that bring animals onto our fairgrounds. And lastly but not least, we continue to want to reach families, understand the And lastly but not least, we continue to want to reach families, understand the changing diversity and dynamics of this county, and incorporate them into our rural lifestyle and be able to let them know that 4H is a wonderful program for them and to let our businesses know that the fair is a wonderful place for them to highlight themselves and reach the county as a whole. So at this time, I will take any questions or feedback that you have for me, and I will be submitting my annual report to you in December, as always, once we are finished balancing and know exactly where we're at financially with the Elbert County Fair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'll take any questions.
Great job. Commissioner Schroeder, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I just want to say thank you to you. I know you point out what everybody else does, but to put an event on takes a strong leader and a competent one, and you have proven that over the years, every year getting better. So I'll say thank you to you as well, as far as being the Board President. Please let us know specifics on your concerns. Not making any promises, but it's always good to have specifics so we can plan and know we're in the middle of budget season now. So if we can kind of have an idea of what the needs are there and how we can prioritize those, I certainly would appreciate that.
I appreciate that. I will certainly send you, gentlemen, an email. I'm a broken record when it comes to these things. We need more money. We had wonderful sponsors this year. We actually lost a sponsor, unfortunately, when we really needed one, but that's behind us now. But as you go into budget talks, your 4H program is important and your Elbert County Fair are important. The fair costs a lot of money to put on. If we are going to maintain our mission of keeping this a free family event, I will be asking again for you to increase what you can support in our Fair Board. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Buck?
Just to echo what Commissioner Schroeder said, great job. Thank you very much for all that you do. Sounds like a lot of work, and I'm glad you take that extra week off after the fair to just get yourself back together, but I also want to add on to what he said and get us the specifics, if you can, on what you think might be some improvements that we can do and try to help out there.
Thank you.
All right, and I'll echo what these other two have said. And I said in the beginning, great job. We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Just get us the information as quickly as you can because we are in the middle of budget, so.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you. All right. All right, any other staff reports? Okay, seeing none, we will move this on to the public comments, and this portion of the agenda is reserved for citizens who wish to comment to the B O C C on items of county interest that are not scheduled for discussion or action. This time will not be used to make political speeches nor will personal attacks be tolerated. Individuals will be limited to one opportunity to speak for a period of up to five minutes during this portion of the agenda. Were there any public comments? Hello.
Hello.
Good morning.
That's a hard act to follow, and this is why we live in Elbert County.
Right. If you could pull that mic down so they can get you, that'd be great. Thank you.
I'm very nervous.
Ah.
I don't have the skill those kids do. My name's Christine Ware. I live at 2681 Gold Creek Drive, Elizabeth, Colorado, in Elbert County. We live in Gold Creek Meadows, which is considered, in my mind, what rural Elbert County needs to be. We are in 200 square acre acres. We have 36 homes, which range in sizes from 2 and 1/2, 2 and 3 acres with 4 10-acre lots. Our particular community has probably been impacted by growth more than any other community, seeing that we are on the border of Elbert County and Elizabeth. When we moved here, I could look out my front door and I can see Pike's Peak. I could look over towards Wild Point and see the few homes at that point in time because we've been here for 21 years, and then wonderful open space. After we got here, I have championed from the beginning the responsible growth for Elizabeth and Elbert County. My first conversation was done at the middle school with Ratoro. I have known Jim Marshall for all of those years. I respect Jim Marshall. I respect developers that want to grow our community and our town, our county responsibly. I know, I did look at the last meeting, and I was really sort of upset about how it all went. I love all of you. I have voted for all of you, but I disagree with some of the things that you have to say. I disagreed with, can't think, can't think her name, but who spoke and said, "The people spoke." Well, the only people at the meeting were not the community. They were all developers or peoples of that kind of interest. I don't think you're listening. People voted down the development in Elizabeth when they want, when Mr. Marshall proposed 681 homes. The people voted that down. He did come to the county, and now I don't know what the number is, maybe 200 and some. So he's gone from 681 to 201. I think Jim gets it. I really do. Now, the, I'm really nervous because I like you guys.
Just take a breath and relax. You're good.
On our community, we are all in wells. I can speak from experience and knowledge because my husband, Bob Ware, was the Chairman of the Elbert County Water Advisory Commission. I have no more about water than I ever want to hear. I hear it all the time, every conversation, it seems to come up. I didn't hear one thing about water last week. I didn't hear one thing about communities that we need to be able to do 4H, that they can raise pigs, they can raise chickens, they can raise whatever large animal. In our community, we can only do two horses, which I think is pretty good, four dogs, probably have lots of cats, and now when I go out and I look at my front door, I see rooftops. It's very discouraging, but I actually supported that development because I think the town is responsible for more high density than it is as we move out. We have lost 75 feet of water with, over the last few years, especially due to the new community, which is called Gold Creek Valley. They decided, the town decided not to put the new wells in until they had their tap fees. Well, that has in fact packed at our wells because we are in the upper Dawson, I mean, sorry, we are in the lower Dawson. There are consequences when you make decisions. In 1975, the Water Board decided to allow the town of Elizabeth to put their Denver Well and have three screens in the upper, lower, and Denver Aquaman.
Commissioners, that's five minutes.
Okay. Just wrap it up real quick.
I agree with, with, what I heard is the people didn't understand what the, pause, I'll call it a pause. I don't know if a moratorium is good. I don't know if a moratorium is bad. That's why I respect your response. I don't agree with you. I voted for all of you. I think you need to listen to the people, not just 20 people that happened to be in the building that day. Sorry.
That's all right.
I didn't say this like I wanted to, but it's what it is.
It's all noted. Thank you very much. Any other public comments?
Good morning, Commissioners. Don Gray, 16,000 Highway 86. I'd like to give you a little bit of an update of what's going on at the Xcel POC, or POC, Public Service Company's eminent domain process. Before I get to that, I'd like to also thank you for putting a fact and fiction section on the website. I'd encourage all the citizens of the county to go to that, read the comments. One thing I might ask is, who answers those questions? It's ambiguous on who's answering each and every question, whether it's the whole county put together or as an individual that answers that question. As far as the landowners are concerned, there's 14 of us that are being sued by Xcel and the Public Service Company as eminent domain. Judge Splayed of the 23rd District ruled or required Xcel to create a one-case management for all these individuals to be at. In doing that, she's trying to streamline the process, may be helpful to the landowners and it may not. That's just an update from the personal. That looks like it's going to go on November 10. The other questions that I do have are, do you have any updates on the lawsuit that Xcel has filed against the county as far as, do we have a date that they're moving forward in the district courts? And the final question that I have is, do we have any updates on the process of the PUC? Is the PUC going to get involved? Has the PUC involved? Has the county been in touch with the PUC on a potential lawsuit between the PUC and Elbert County? That's all I have today, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I would like to address, but we can't. I've been told to zip it when it comes to Xcel Energy, and we'll just leave it at that unless Lance feels like he can say something.
I can give an update on some procedure if the Board would like. The PUC action is moving forward. Elbert County and El Paso County are both intervening in those cases as a matter of right. Those responses are actually due at 5:00 today. I'm reviewing ours, and it's quite good. It's also opposing an expedited schedule proposed by Xcel to wrap this up by no later than January of next year. We think that's unreasonable and unrealistic. In any event, there have been two intervenors as of right so far. The Colorado Energy Office has intervened, and staff for the PUC has intervened. So those will be the parties moving forward unless somebody else files a motion to intervene by 5:00 today. So the PUC action is moving forward. We will be a party to that action, although I need to finish my review. So procedurally, that's where we're at. We do not have a schedule from the PUC because that will not be resolved until our motion is filed and the disputed issues are addressed, but we'll move forward with whatever schedule the PUC gives us.
Okay, thank you, sir. I hope that took care of your questions. All right, any other public comments this time? All right, next item on the agenda is discussion items, and we have a presentation and a discussion on a draft of the 2024 audit.
Morning, Commissioners. Tiffany Hermes, Finance Director.
Morning.
Today, I have Matt Marino with Ruben Brown to present our financials for you.
I hear we've got some exciting news today.
It was nice to hear the 4Hers talk a little bit about budgeting and financial reporting. The accountant in me was very happy to hear that the continued financial competency of the next generation is building, so that's good to talk about. But to get about to the important things, talk about your 2024 audit. Really, the overall, the main thing to report is we are going to be issuing an unmodified or clean opinion. So we do a couple different audits. We audit your financial statements. Your financial team primarily puts those together, and so that's Tiffany and her team, as well as Michelle, your contractor, that helps with certain elements of financial reporting. And then also, because the county receives and expends federal funds or grant funds, we also do something called a single audit. And so for this year, we audited the FEMA funds that were used to do the repair of the different elements of the county that needed repair as a result of flooding. So that federal program audit kind of rotates different programs every year. FEMA was the largest program this year, and so we really only had to do that program this year to get the required coverage that we needed, and we're happy to report that there were no recommendations, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies that we need to bring to your attention. Your team worked very hard to make sure that you met all of the different compliance requirements. You did all the filings that needed to happen, that you did everything that needed to happen to make sure that, number one, things are rebuilt back to where they need to be, and number two, the money was spent correctly in compliance with the federal regulations and the grant agreements. So as far as the financials for this year, there's a couple things to point out just that were different from the past. I know you have a draft that you had a couple days to look at. The biggest thing is there was a new Governmental Accounting Standards Board statement, so the Governmental Accounting Standards Board issues different statements that changes how financial reporting should occur. So there was a new one that had to do with how compensated absences or like vacation are accounted for, and it did broaden the scope a little bit behind not just vacation but any sort of compensated absences where you might have the obligation to pay somebody when they're out of commission for whatever it is, and so that was implemented without any really difficulty. Your team did it all. We just audited it and made sure that there was nothing that we couldn't live with, so that's one thing that's important to point out. And really, outside of that, overall financial reporting was what we would expect to see for the most part. You kind of adhered to your budgets and definitely adhered to your amended budgets, so nothing to report on that. Probably the biggest financial change from the prior years is we did take on a good amount of donated capital assets or infrastructure as a result of the development going on in the area, so that was approximately $33 million. Outside of that, there's nothing specifically I want to highlight other than your team also did implement a new accounting software during 2025, and so that did put them behind a little bit, then, and then we came in a little bit behind that, and I was unable to catch up from that, and then we had some changes on my team, so that put us a little farther behind. So we will, our goal is to not be talking to you in September next year. Our goal is to talk to you in June next year. So we will own a large part of that because my team also had some difficulties. We had some changeover in our staff, so I will own that publicly for our group. But we're still ahead of the deadline. We'll meet the extension deadline prior to September 30, so no concerns on that. As far as the financials go, I would encourage you to look at the Management Discussion Analysis. It's a good summary of the financial operations of the county. Governmental accounting standards are not the easiest to understand, although I wouldn't put it past the 4Hers to understand it. It sounds like they're pretty astute at that, but that's a good summary. Really, overall, nothing that I think merits too much attention other than the items I've already highlighted. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple of points I'd like to make out here just for point of clarity. Misconception to the public, we were not late. We filed an extension with DOLA and it was approved.
Correct.
All right, and then our finance team, the way I understand it, they adopted a new scope of work and flawlessly implemented that. We had no arrows with that whatsoever, plus the new software that they did, so they've done an outstanding job with, and this is the first time in a very long time that we've got a clean audit back. Is that correct?
You've gotten a, with no comments as far as significant deficiencies and material weaknesses. There's been a couple comments in prior years. Correct.
Right, so great job to our finance team and to everybody that participates, all the county employees with that, and I just want to clarify that and just to dispel rumors out there, it was not our finance team that was late or dragging their feet or not doing their jobs. Everybody did what they were supposed to do.
Yes, and it's a monumental task to do a new accounting software, and it was an item that has been contemplated for many, many years here, and with the growth the county has experienced and will continue to experience. I applaud the taking on that effort and getting it done so that you have a financial package that should have the ability to grow with the county and meet the future needs.
Well, thank you for that, and just sorry to run that in the ground so much, but you have the, what I call the bitter brigade out there that like to, like to attack our county employees, social media, and I just want to make sure we clear the air and that everybody understands that our team did a great everybody understands that our team did a great job, and thank you for that.
And they were very, even though they weren't where they wanted to be, it was very collaborative. They let us know. We communicated back and forth, and I want to applaud, not all clients are that way. It is a very collaborative approach back and forth, and so we really appreciate that, because we want to make sure we meet the needs of the county and, number one, produce clear financial reports, so that everybody has that.
Tiffany, thank you very much to you and your team for everything you've done. Commissioner Buck, do you have any questions or comments, sir?
Just a comment. Thank you very much for all your work, and I also would like to thank our finance team and Tiffany. But you did catch my attention with an item that you brought up, the $33 million.
Correct.
So that caught my attention immediately. Can you elaborate on that?
So when development occurs in a community, there is certain infrastructure that is typically deeded over to your, to your ownership, basically, and so you have to bring that on at a, basically a value of what would be, it would be to construct it if you were to construct it. And so that's, you hired an engineering firm to help with that, and we reviewed the calculations, and we found them to be reasonable.
Can you give me some examples?
So, for example, you would look at how many feet you've, how many feet of roads you procured, what kind of road is it? What sort of improvements? Are there bridges? Are there culverts? All that sort of stuff gets taken into that calculation.
Okay. That's all I had.
All right. Commissioner Schroeder, sir?
No, Matt, it's good to see you again. I appreciate your work, and I just echo the kudos to our staff. Point out a couple things in particular. I'd say good job to Corinne for getting a clean audit on the FEMA funds. I know she worked with Ashley, who was here previously, our finance team, but those two did a great job. At the time, we knew it was a good job. They were already getting funds back, but to hear a clean, clean audit on that, there's a lot of hoops to jump through when you start going through that, and that speaks volumes to the quality of work that was done. So since Monty's not here, you get to get all the, all the credit, so good job. And likewise to Tiffany and her team. Michelle, our outside accountant, the team that she works with, Kristen, I saw Kristen was here earlier, but I guess she skipped out. She'd rather listen to her daughter than us. I don't understand. But good job to your team. Same thing as what I told Tammy. It's a team effort, but it takes a good, strong leader at the top to make it work, so thank you to Tiffany for that, and to Sean also for setting the bar and overseeing all that. We appreciate that. For me, the bottom line is looking at our unassigned balance, looking at the end of 2024 of 12.1 million, which was an increase of 300,000 from 23, speaks volumes to everybody across the county who watch their budget closely, obviously budgeted well for us to just have a $300,000 difference. And so it is a team effort across the county. Everybody takes their responsibility seriously, and I certainly appreciate it, and we do appreciate Ruben Brown as well. Thank you.
Sir, any other comments or?
That's all I have, unless you have specific things you'd like me to weigh in on.
No, I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is action items, and we have H1, and there was some change to some wording. Commissioner Buck, do you want to discuss that?
I don't.
On the Jim Marshall, you moved, you made a motion to move this to H1?
Oh, that was in the minutes. It was designated as H1, and I thought we addressed it and got the motion for the consent agenda.
Okay. Just want to be sure.
That was just correcting the minutes.
Okay.
From last meeting, so noted, and we'll get that done.
Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is executive session. Gentlemen, do we need executive sessions today? Nope. All right. We'll move forward. Next item's planning, or board planning, agenda items for next meeting. Do any of you have agenda items for next meeting? Commissioner Schroeder? Commissioner Buck? All right. Workshops or study sessions, pending hearings? Okay? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item, which is land use hearings at 1:00 PM, and it's my understanding we have none today. We do? Okay. All right. So then we will recess this meeting until 1:00 PM. Thank you.